Today is Tuesday, February 6, 2024. This is a meeting with the Board of Selectmen. Is there a motion to call the meeting to order?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is being audio and video recorded. Please rise for the Bledge Allegiance. The Bledge Allegiance. First order of business, gentlemen, is to approve the minutes of January 9, 2024, regular meeting, and January 22, 2024, regular meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next order of business, we have a quick executive session on the general law, Chapter 38, subsection 21a3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, golf management, and Greens Committee role. Ask me if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair still declares that the board will return to public session after conclusion of the executive session. Roll call vote, Mr. Inkley?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
And I am a yes. We are now in executive session.
Executive session to return to open session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Roll call vote, Mr. Inkley?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
And I am a yes. We are now back in open session. The board did not take any votes in executive session. We are removing number one and number two off of the agenda. I'm gonna go out of order, gentlemen. If it's okay with the board to get down to what we have on here is rent control, to accommodate the folks that are here. I just want to bring it to everybody's attention that this is not the body of the Rent Control Board. It is the Board of Selectmen. We would have to schedule a public hearing under the Rent Control Board to hear all matters and start making decisions. So we won't be able to have any votes on matters. But if any residents want to have the podium and discuss some of their concerns, that's fine.
Excuse me, but you mentioned you're taking one and two off the schedule.
Yeah, Mr. Flynn just went out.
They're gonna be on Friday.
Good thing I came flying over here for my dentist appointment.
They're gonna be on Friday morning.
Friday morning?
Yeah. Go talk to Mr. Flynn. Thank you. Please just state your name when you get to the podium.
Lisa Boyson.
Hi.
And I live at the Bay State Mobile Home Town. Address is, the park was recently sold. It was from, what's his name?
Dennis Tatro.
What is it?
Dennis Tatro.
Dennis Tatro, and now it's Stanley Properties out of Lakeville or Middlebury. My concern is that they have gone up on the rent over $200 per month, and there was a rent control. And I believe that is 10% of the increase that they can do. I had seen it on, on one of the, I had gone through some of the things on my phone, and it said the increase could be up to 10% other than if there was no increase in income. Or, I'm trying to think of the, I had everything all flat.
Capital cost?
Unless there was no cost of living raised, then the rent, the rent control could only be increased up to 5% if there was no increase in the income, the cost of living. So what we're saying is now they're going over the 10% of the thing. How is that allowed if the bill was put into VAR? They can only raise the rent up to 10% at a time?
Good.
And that's kind of it?
It's been, it's been a while since I've been involved with rent control. We did it back in, I think, I think we adopted it in 2012. At town meeting, and the special act was accepted in September 26, 2013. So with that said, we've done some things over 14, 15 years. With another incident, I was heavily involved with that one. So it's been a while. We'd have to brush up on some of the new laws. I contacted town council actually today on some questions and concerns that I had.
Yeah. We were just trying to get some information too. Unfortunately, we weren't, nobody was getting back to us, and we were just being transferred to this number and that number.
So if you go on, if you go on the Attorney General's website, I actually have the handbook from 2011, but I did go online to see if it was still in existence. So there's a handbook from the Attorney General's office for rent control. And it gives you a whole breakdown on everything that's, that how we would derive to what's fair.
Okay.
But it's, the handbook's probably that thick.
Yeah.
It's got a lot of ins and outs, the do's and don'ts, the things that an owner can do, the rights of the renters, and things of the like. So there's a lot there to digest, but I think if you, if you wanted to, you know, get a better idea of what's going on, to go on the Attorney General's website and look for that.
Okay. They had also sent us a packet, and in there it says something about we can't have any oil tanks in the property. So I addressed that with him one day when he was around, and he said, oh, that's for new tenants. It's not for existing tenants. I said, but it doesn't say that. I said, so you could come back in a week if we sign this, sign this document, and saying we have to get rid of that. And he says, well, I wouldn't do that. Well, everybody can say I wouldn't do that.
Yeah.
And still do it anyway. I said, that really needs to be invented.
It should clearly state in that document for existing, you know, mobile homeowners. That's an exemption for them.
And there was also, he put something stating that if he has to do a certain kind of work there, that he's gonna be charging the tenants for the work that he's doing. But it's not for our property. It's just for the, you know, the park itself. You know, that that cost is gonna be brought on to us.
That is true. He can, he actually can pay himself a fair salary as well in the Attorney General's handbook. It does state that as well.
Yeah.
So the property owner is allowed to pay himself a fair salary. The words of the Attorney General, not myself. So.
And what do they consider fair?
Well, that's always the question, right?
Right.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I don't wanna get too much of a discussion on the past park, but, you know, there was a number, and, you know, if the Rent Control Board was to take up the matters, you know, that's all to be disclosed in how he's deriving to rent.
Okay.
And that would be the job of the Rent Control Board, again, which we are not technically a rent control body right now.
Okay. Who is?
Sorry?
Who is?
The Board of Selectmen of the Rent Control Board. We were designated by town meeting. We named ourselves as the Rent Control. This is not a rent control meeting. So we, we can have a brief discussion on what the concerns are, and at the end, we can say that we're gonna submit this to the Rent Control Board for a hearing.
Okay.
And then we can start getting into the jits of everything that we need to get into the jits of and get that ball rolling. But we have to properly notice, you know, all the tenants, the property owner, that there's gonna be a hearing, a time and place certain, and things of the like.
Okay. All right.
About the $200,000 liability?
Oh, okay. There was also, he mentioned that everybody has to have a $2,000 insurance.
$200,000? $200,000 for a trailer?
$200,000 insurance policy on each mobile home. Is that allowed?
I'd have to, I'd have to look at the rights.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would ask that we, I think it's some, clearly the residents are petitioning, petitioning the Board of Selectmen to inform the Rent Control Board. We should do a hearing. We should bring John, I think last time we did this, we had John. Tonight, we had town council here for that, and they kind of oversaw the proceedings of like, what can and cannot be done. We did this for Clem's Way, right?
Uh huh.
So if you can just give us a little bit of time to try to figure out the best next steps legally, then, you know, I think that's, we owe it to the residents to do that, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You know, it's a motion, Mr. Chairman. Motion to refer rent control.
And to report, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And to report to the Rent Control Board?
And to have at least an update for the next meeting, our next selectman's meeting, on where we stand with our research. And then we can set something up from there.
Your motion?
Right, you, yeah, I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we have an update at the next selectman's meeting on what our research indicates, and what the next steps will be.
I'm waiting, I'm waiting for some comments from Mr. Eichmann that Mr. Warner mentioned. I actually got off the phone with him on the way here.
Okay.
Just looking at some of my old records, trying to get my bounce back on this stuff.
Okay.
There's a lot of, we don't know whether this is that. So I, you know, we want to make sure that we're doing things in the right format, because it can be challenged.
Right. Okay.
So we want to make sure that we have all our ducks in a row to represent.
Very good. And someone's gonna call one of us? And I believe you, I, you called me and left me, so thank you for that.
We would probably send letters to everybody if we're gonna do a hearing. It would be a public hearing. So we would probably send notices to all the residents, including the property owner.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'll second, Mr. Warner's.
Second on Mr. Warner's motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
So we have Kuschnik, the police department, flock camera test program. I believe I seen the chief's, chief is right here.
Good evening, everyone.
Welcome, Chief.
You're welcome.
Thank you. You can tell you, you have a copy of the memorandum that I sent over. I'm pretty much here to answer any questions you may have. The system, there's absolutely no obligation. And there's not gonna be any cost to the town. It's gonna be funded for a one-year trial basis out of the Law Enforcement Trust Fund, which is comprised of money that's from the asset forfeiture system of the state. A little familiarity with that, or if our offices or more so our detectives are involved in, you know, some sort of, you know, drug investigation that results in the seizure of assets, and that person is found guilty, monies are transferred, you know, eventually, once the guilty finding is made and gone through all the processes, gone through the DA's office, then it's deposited in the Law Enforcement Trust Fund. We do have some money in there, and this just seems to be like a logical use. The cameras will allow us to collect data on motor vehicles. I assure you that the program is gonna be governed by a, you know, a policy, and there's gonna be limited access to it even within our department strictly for investigative purposes. I know when people hear cameras, they automatically think of like traffic enforcement and things of that nature. The state of Massachusetts actually prohibits, you know, cameras from being used strictly for civil motor vehicle infractions. This would be more for, you know, criminal investigations, the types of vehicles that are in the area. If we have, say, you know, an armed robbery or car break or house breaks, it will help us collect data on the vehicles and help us point us in the right direction. It also allows us access to a network with other communities that use similar cameras and be able to query that same database. So if, say, the city in Bedford is experiencing something maybe right over the line, and they have, you know, cameras in place in that area, we can kind of cross-reference the vehicles to see where they're going. It's more of an investigatory tool. It's not the end-all be-all, but it helps point us in the right direction in a lot of cases.
It's a grant?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a one-year. The money we have is actually, like I said, sitting in the trust fund now to kind of use for purchases that are outside the police budget. And that's exactly what we'd be doing since, like I said, it's only a one-year, it's a one-year, a one-year obligation. We'll see how it works. If it works, then we'll consider, you know, working into the budget. If it doesn't, you know, if we don't see it's being fruitful, then we'll, we'll let it go.
Right. Mr. Chairman? So, you're telling me that the cameras can't be used for those kind of traffic things? So you're telling me all those tolls I had to pay that they sent me, that was illegal?
You're talking to the state of Massachusetts.
I was like, how do they know I went through that toll?
Well, I imagine there's probably an exemption for tolls.
Yeah?
There's an exemption for tolls.
Yep. Selectman Inkley?
Just a quick question, Chief. You said it's a one-year test installation. Do you have any idea how many they'd be putting up? Or is it just a single camera?
As of right now, it would be a single camera, but we may, depending, I don't want to disclose the actual location, but we may actually move it around and see where we get the best bang for our buck.
Selectman Warner?
I'm, I'm willing to give it a shot.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Have a good night. Next, we have ambulance bill abatement request from Chief Fallon in the finance team. Gentlemen, I will not read off the names. All I would, in past practice, I'll run, I'll read a run number, amount. So is the motion to abate, run number 21-1680003 in the amount of $2,844.23?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to abate, run number 22-163799 in the amount of $1,656.40?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to abate, run number 22-274854 in the amount of $2,735.32?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to abate, run number 23-19423 in the amount of $2,074.53?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Kelly, can you pass that on to the finance team?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have, every year, we do the Lakeville Animal Shelter Agreement. I've had our office, Ms. Sydney Viveras and Tanya DeVos sent this off and had Ms. Becky Tomlinson come in, our animal control office, and review the document, make sure everything's copasthetic. She's in agreement that everything's copasthetic. So is there a motion to approve the Lakeville Animal Shelter Agreement?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And for Ms. LeBarney, we have the presidential primary warrant. Just read it real quick. In the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the city or town who are qualified to vote in primaries to vote at precinct 1, 2, 2A, and 3, Kuschnik Elementary School, 800 Middle Road, on Tuesday, the 5th day of March, 2024, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. for the following purpose: to cast their votes in the presidential primaries for candidates of political parties for the following offices. Presidential preference for this Commonwealth, state committee man, second Bristol in Plymouth District; state committee woman, second Bristol in Plymouth District; Akuschnik Town Committee, Town of Akuschnik. Motion to approve the warrant.
And execute.
Yeah, execute.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good. Patriot Half Marathon. We're real early on this, but I guess it's good for everybody that's gotta prepare for it. Gentlemen, this is something we also do every year for the individuals that are hosting this. I've looked at the paperwork. We see the chief and the fire chief have signed off on it. Is there a motion to approve the Patriot Half Marathon?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The event is June 15, 2024, starting at Cathedral Camp in East Freetown. Athlete cycling on Kuschnik Roads, 10:00 a.m. to 2:15. I actually don't see any roads that they're going through, but. Any, all right. EverSource, Wing Road. Permit that we have in the book, the request is inaccurate. It was a permit request back in November 28, 2023. Anthony is here from EverSource. Welcome, Anthony.
Mr. Chairman, how you doing?
Good, and you?
Pretty good. No, thanks for taking us up tonight. So, yeah, we had submitted this permit back in November. We submitted it in January, well, I sent it back on January 10. We're just looking to do this permit from basically Hathaway and Wing Lane around Neuer Street, and then down Wing Road connected onto Main Street. We were looking if it's possible to start it at the end of February, but it's up to the town. It doesn't have to be, and we're just looking for your feedback. And I know there's concerns on traffic. I would love to set up a meeting with the chief. I know he just left, but I can set it up. I can organize with Kelly, start a discussion to figure out some traffic mitigation plan. The last thing we want to do is shut down roads. But, and I know there's some concern on the previous job, so let's try to fix that and have that meeting go from there.
So you wanted to get the permit from, for the end of February. The problem is I, we have an email from DPW, and they don't let anybody do anything until April 15. But I spoke to them today, and I altered the permit to say work can begin April 1, 2024, weather permitting. So I think that's the furthest, because they have a policy, it's April 15, for road openings and plates and all that stuff. And I've even had a further discussion with them that said if, you know, maybe a week or two earlier, depending, again, weather permitting, what the future forecast is, if we end up in a real big warm cycle, you know, where we think winter's over, you know, they would allow you and give you permission to start a little bit earlier. But I think for tonight, this board should just stick with the April 1, weather permitting.
Yeah.
And there can't be any road closures, Anthony.
Right, right, right.
Nice Lane, total nightmare. I got hammered, not only from people that I know on Nice Lane, but from all the neighborhoods where the detours were going through. Obviously, I was traveling through there every day. I use Nice Lane every day, getting flagged down by people I know, and just hammered everywhere I go about the detours, and people speeding through neighborhoods because of the detours and the inconvenience. And I was never discussed with the board that we would be doing a full road closure. So Wing Road absolutely cannot be closed. There's no way for you to detour those people around without going all the way down Main Street to Perry Hill to Mendel Road and coming back up the opposite side. Just way too much of an inconvenience for everybody. So one lane needs to stay open at all times.
Sure, understood. So, but I still think we should have that meeting with the, we're gonna ask for a detail from the police board, so we should have a meeting with them to discuss the whole package, to make sure that they're on the same page as the whole board.
I think the motion would be no closures, road closures?
Motion to approve the.
And also to make, I know we met in the fall. Make sure that whatever the conditions are that the town wants, make sure that you put that on the permit. So when it gets sent back to us, the whole gas team can see it, permitting, scheduling, maintenance, construction, right?
Right. I mean, obviously, you would have to allow temporary closures when you're crossing the road and stuff like that, but you guys can still plate and everything else. You try to do that without interfering with bus schedules, right?
Of course.
Because you do have bus schedules over there as well. So the timeframes, we'll figure out with, we'll communicate with the school when buses are let go and everything else, so we can give you our team. We'll put that on the permit as well. I'll work with DPW, the school department, to figure out the hours of school bus in the mornings, the afternoons. You guys get that four-hour window, five-hour window, you know, maybe 9:30 in the morning till 2:00 in the afternoon. If you're gonna be buzzing across the road, that's the five-hour window. You can be clipping across the road, but at 2:00, you gotta make sure that road's open back up for buses.
Yeah, absolutely. And I just, so Scott, he's a construction supervisor. He's gonna be the man in charge of this whole project.
All right. So now, so now I need your business, Scott. So when I get, so when I get complaints, I can hammer you as much as I'm getting hammered, right?
And it would be left open to emergency vehicles to run that road just in case, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Even if we are crossing, we'll have plates on hand. That way, if we know they're coming, we go plate it and get them through.
Yeah. So we'll put some conditions on the permit.
Sure.
We'll have DPW send us down a permit. We'll write up some conditions.
Okay.
Circulate it. Mr. Kelly could circulate it through the board to make sure the board's okay with it before we submit it out to EverSource.
Sound good to me?
One other topic, and I know it's not on the agenda, but I'm briefly gonna hit you with this because I got hit by this a number of times when we've had this discussion, but polls. Okay? I brought this issue up a while back with the board, and we all had concerns about double polling. I got more friggin' double polls now in the Town of Akuschnik than Cottles got liver pills. I don't know what's going on, and I also know that this proposed poll replacement's all down Hathaway Road. It's a nightmare. I think this board's gonna have to have a meeting, just a separate meeting, EverSource, about that poll, the double polling.
Sure.
It's a safety issue, some of the way these shrapins are going on. There's one right out here off South Main Street. There's like a two-foot split hanging off the pole. Little kids with their parents walking by. It's right at face height for a little kid. Totally unacceptable. At least to me, it is totally unacceptable. I don't need anybody getting hurt because of somebody else's ignorance. So I think we're gonna put a policy in place in the Town of Akuschnik, and this board's gonna have to consider a policy in place where every poll that you put in, you remove five.
Do you have addresses on the polls that you're talking about right now that I can just?
Really?
Well, Anthony, it's all up and down. It's down.
I mean, it's everywhere.
The ones you just.
The Burke Street one's still there on Middle Road, right?
Yeah.
Nice Lane, Cock Street. You guys are just over there working. I know it's gas, but, I mean, it's right there, double pole. The other pole looks like it's falling into the road. You're out here banging up poles, and my biggest concern is all the poles down Hathaway Road, and they're pretty far apart on Hathaway Road, but we're responsible when you people go and put up a new pole. And it's not from a car accident. You must be getting paid from solar companies for all this new pole lining that you're putting up, because they're much higher in greater lines, right? And transformers being on it. So if you're getting paid from a solar company to put all these brand-new poles in, then we, the town, should be compensated so that we, the taxpayer, aren't paying for all those transfers of the light fixtures to your new poles.
Yeah, I just want to make sure.
And I know it's not EverSource. We had this conversation. A lot of the poles are Verizon. We're gonna hammer Verizon too. I think we're gonna have a meeting. The board's gonna have a meeting. And nothing else is gonna be on the agenda but to hammer out EverSource and Verizon and cable, and whoever else we need to bring in that has crap on poles, because this plan of whoever the last man in is on the pole is not working in this town or anywhere else in the Commonwealth. And I just read an article that was sent to me by an individual, and I won't put names on anybody's article, but technically, it's illegal.
So it's a 90-day policy. But I just want to make sure that who is.
90 days? The Burke Street and Middle Road one, Anthony? That thing's been there for like three years.
I know, but I want to, I just need some, I don't see the left of the double poles as a personal thing every day, so I just wanted an address to see if I could follow up on them with electric operations.
Burke Street and Middle Road.
Okay.
I mean, that's the first one that I can name, and the other one is Cock Street and Nice Lane. So those are two that I can just pop right off the top of my head. If you want to do this one too over here, it's Main and North, South Main. When you leave the parking lot, you can't miss it. Right? But they're everywhere.
I'll ask Electric Operations for a report, you know? Let's see who's, who's left on the double poles. This way, you guys can have an accurate picture of what's left to do.
Quite honestly, I think it might be Verizon's job or EverSource's job to go identify where all the double poles are. I don't think it's the Board of Selectmen's job to do that. I can give you the names of a few of them, but I can tell you right now, no matter where I drive in town, you've assisted up poles everywhere.
No, I understand that. You just specifically mentioned a series of poles where there's low wires that are, were a potential danger. That's what, that's what you just said. That's what I meant, was referring to when you.
This one right, this one right out here is a complete disaster. And you know how many people walk? We got sidewalks over here, and I see people walking all the time to go looping around this thing, because the accident that happened, it took out the pole.
Sure.
But this crap all over the pole, and that pole, if you look two and a half, three feet off the ground?
Yeah.
I ripped a piece of the telephone pole off, but there's a split that's sticking straight out. I mean, whoever went over there and put the new pole in, they could've trimmed it with a saw or something and got rid of that giant splitter that's gonna rip somebody's kid's face off.
So then we have, there's an internal system that we use? And Verizon also uses this Comcast in municipalities, right? Who's left on the pole, that determines when the pole can be removed. So, but in Akuschnik, I'm just not sure who's left and what order of removal is on the poles. And Verizon also uses this Comcast in municipalities, right? Who's left on the pole, that determines the, when the pole can be removed. So, in a, but in Acushnet, I, I'm just not sure the, who's left and what order of removal is on the poles. I just have to look that up and I'll get you guys a report.
Right, I, if we don't have a policy in place, Mr. Kelly, we're gonna make a policy, right? And it's gonna be just what I said. You put a pole in, you're taking five out.
Sure.
Until they're all gone.
So, let's, let's say like, if there's a pole, right, we move our, our wires on the top, whoever's left, we're, we're not allowed to touch those, yeah?
I, I, I totally get the liability and all that stuff. My lamp, not yours, you have to go do this, we just put it on the ground, we're not paying, but we're gonna have a much bigger discussion about.
Gotcha.
Why are we, the taxpayers, footing the bill, three, four hundred bucks a lamp, to reset it on your new pole when the solar company's paying you to put in all these new poles and lines? Because obviously, it's about the grid, right? Capacity. So, I think Verizon and EverSource is getting subsidized to do all this work. I don't think EverSource and Verizon's gonna say, I have the kindness of my heart. I'm gonna spend a million dollars on putting new poles down Hathaway Road. Don't worry, solar company, I'll eat that cost for you to generate power. I don't think that's how it's working. I'm pretty sure you guys are getting compensated from solar.
We get paid for those that work.
So, if that's the case, we wanna know which ones are being compensated, subsidized from a solar company, and we want money from the solar company as well to put our lamps back up. That's all I'm saying.
That makes sense, yeah.
Right? Instead of the taxpayers paying for it.
Sure.
And then we're, you have a lot of poles going up in that area over there. So, that's gonna be a lot of money off of our books, and I don't think we should be paying for it. So, we'll schedule a meeting with you guys shortly, um, in Verizon.
But do, um, cable?
Uh, it's also been recognized in the governor's, in the municipal reform act, has, uh, proposed powers to the municipalities to enforce the no-two poll rule.
Yeah. But shit, that law hasn't passed yet.
Not yet. Though, a number of municipalities that are lobbying for it.
Sure, no, I get that, yeah.
I, didn't, didn't the town of Westport already enact something that says for every pole you put in, two poles gotta be removed?
I'm not aware of that. But they probably did, but I just don't know.
I'll call that gentleman one more time. I had a conversation with him, but we talked about a whole host of other things pertaining to poles. And so, what you did do is, it is EverSource's poles that are lying on the side of Middle Road. I think it's somewhere around four hundred, four oh six Middle Road at the high tension lines, your Eastman. You've got two gigantic pole sections there, um, lying on the side of the road for, God, I don't know. Call it two or three, four months, whatever it's been. Just sitting on the side of the road.
Transmission poles?
They're not regular telephone poles because the diameter of those poles tell me that they came off of the Eastman. A big, a big bombers.
Okay.
It's not a regular sized telephone pole. It's, it's much larger in diameter. They're probably sixteen inches in diameter versus whatever the standard pole is, ten or twelve.
I'll, I'll take a look. Um, but if they've been there for, I mean, you could ask me this, I would've happy to looked into it a couple of months ago. It doesn't have to sit there for three or four months, you know?
I, again, I didn't know it was my job to babysit.
No, I know, but, I know, I, I, I understand.
And then people are just, again, contacting other people in, in the offices in Town Hall, and they get to me, and it's like, okay, I get it, so maybe I should be talking to somebody, figured you were coming in tonight, and.
Yeah.
I'm hitting, I'm hitting you with a few things.
I had the same conversation Friday. Sat down with two guys, you know, same thing.
I mean, I'm everywhere in the community, right, so I'm not, I'm not very hard to find. I'm pretty visible in the community. So, yeah, I, I, I take a beating, and I exorbe a lot of it. Um, on y'all behalf and Verizon's behalf and every, you know, I try to do my best in managing, um, you know, the conversation, but sometimes, man, you just, you just get tired of getting hit over there with that baseball bat. I had you here, I had you here tonight. I appreciate you listening, and.
Yeah.
We're gonna figure it out. We're gonna develop a policy so it can't continue in the town.
Um, does the town charge a permit for, like, uh, private companies? Because say, say a solar developer comes in, has a project, there, there must be a permitting process with the town.
For the solar, if you're talking solar, for the solar fields themselves to go through, like, you know, conservation and everything else, but it's got nothing to do with them connected to a grid. And I guess maybe the building department might come up with some kind of, I forgot what it's called, but the fee, once they put you online or whatever it is, I think there's some kind of a permit fee there.
I was just curious if permitting would show that an upgrade would be needed to any poles that were needed for our customer.
Again, but I don't know a planning board in conservation, you know, they, they, you know, they, they got this scope of services and work and bylaws to a bye-bye. I don't think they're gonna be sitting there and go, oh, wait a minute, how about, when we telephone poles are gonna replace, right?
I get it. I'm, I'm just trying to figure out a way to help achieve what you guys are looking for, right?
All the interconnection stuff is between you and the company.
Gotcha.
For like, what Mr. Chairman said. The planning board sees the project, assumes that the engineer knows how much land that they need to disturb. They don't necessarily look at the actual power transmission of the.
Got it, okay.
So, if we just put a policy in place, we can send it to you, Verizon, Cable, let everybody know what it is.
Totally.
And this, this is what it is, this is how it's gonna be done, or you're not putting, placing any more poles in the ground until you go pick up all those other ones and fix all that mess that you got in all these other places. And once you satisfy that, you can put in another pole, and then you go remove five more, double poles, and you can put in one more pole. I mean, if, if that's, if that's what we need to do in the best interest of this town and the townspeople, then that's what we need to do. Because it doesn't appear like it's being done by the companies. And I know that you don't own a lot of the poles, so we'll, you know, when we get Verizon, we'll beat them up too.
Yeah.
Whatever.
I'll take a look at four oh, four hundred, four oh six Middle Road.
It's right around there.
Yeah.
You can't miss it. Drive down, it's right on your Eastman, right on the right side of the road, heading north.
Okay.
So, you can't miss it. And when you're driving down Middle Road, Birch Street's quarter of a mile before that, on the left side of the road.
I got that, yeah.
That's where you'll see it. It's across from Weldon Lane, Birch Street. All right, so is there a motion to approve the permit for Wing Road, work can begin April first, two thousand twenty-four, weather permitting? Or sooner if the DPW says so?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. You all said, Anthony? Thank you, Anthony.
Appreciate it.
School roof ban rollover. Mr. Kelly, turn that over to you on the whole business.
Uh, this has been on for a number of years. It's the anticipatory notes prior to bonding, uh, the, for the school roof. It's one million, one hundred and twenty thousand, four percent general obligation bond anticipation note. That's what, when you say ban. Uh, it goes year to year. It, we pay the interest only and what money we budget to pay down the note. And it's, uh, eventually, you'll either have to go out to bond or you'll have paid off. You, you have ten years to, uh, total to do a ban. Okay. It's, uh, uh, it's also, as you know, uh, the, uh. This board has discussed and the chair has discussed using solar money to pay down the principal. That's available to the board.
Yeah, I was just gonna, it seems like the, I don't know much about bans until I started reading through this stuff here. I was just familiar with bonding, you know, ten year, fifteen year. That was, that was the idea back a few years ago when we were pursuing this roof project for the Acushnet Elementary School. Um, and the plan really was take, the town side was like roughly one point three million, get five hundred for free cash, leave ourselves with eight hundred, and then do that over the ten years or fifteen years. And we'd be paying off in the solar revenue fund like eighty-three grand. That was at a little bit lower interest rate than what you can do now, so it'd be a little bit more money. Um, but it seems like the ban is really just paying interest, not principal.
The ban is like a home equity loan and versus the mortgage, which is the bond. So, you could, on a home equity loan, pay the interest only monthly if you decided to, or you could pay down the principal. This gives the board the flexibility over a ten year span to do that.
Right. This, this particular ban is only for like nine months, right?
Yeah. It's, you, you, every year, you reroll it over.
Okay. So, I think this board needs to have that gone, well, we've had the conversation, right, of getting an article for this town meeting for an appropriation from the solar revenue. If there's any other recommendations, free cash, whatever the board would like to do to pay down. Principal, but we should be proactive, get a, get an article of this town meeting at least for the solar revenue fund, see what we have for a balance in there, maybe not use it all, but a good chunk of it, and put it towards the principal.
You've got over three hundred thousand.
When this, so if we wanted to pay it on principal, would we have to wait until, I think this one expires in November, the ban? We would wait for the ban to come up, this, the end of this term, and then when we go out and we call it re-ban. We would pay two hundred, whatever the number is, two hundred thousand dollars on a principal, get ourselves down to one point one from the nine hundred thousand, and then we would re-ban nine hundred thousand.
Correct.
That's how this would work, and we could continue that path as we go through.
Correct.
We can ban for a period not to exceed ten years, you said?
Every year for ten years from the time you started banning this, and that was, I believe, three years ago.
Oh, so we need to move and get the principal down.
Yep.
Fast, right? Okay.
That would be, uh, my advice to solar, maybe some free cash.
Yep, excellent. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right. Any questions, comments, concerns on the ban? Any questions, comments, concerns on the ban?
Uh, no.
Okay. There are motion.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I move on February sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, at a meeting of the Board of Selectmen of the town of Acushnet, Massachusetts, of which meeting all members of the board were duly notified. And at which a quorum was present that the following votes may be taken, be taken. The Board of Selectmen hereby determines in accordance with General Law, Chapter seventy B, that the cost of the Acushnet Elementary School partial roof replacement project authorized by vote of the town passed on November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, Article One. Being financed with proceeds of a portion of the notes defined below, together with all other bonds and notes of the town previously issued to pay costs of this project. Does not exceed the portion of the total cost of the project that is not being paid by the school facilities grant. And the Board of Selectmen hereby approves the issuance of notes and bonds to finance this project under General Law, Chapter seventy B. Further voted, the Board of Selectmen votes to approve the sale of one million, one hundred and twenty thousand dollars, four point two five percent general obligation bond anticipation notes. Of the town dated February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and payable November twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four, to Fidelity Capital Markets, a Division of National Financial Services, LLC. At par and accrued interest, if any, plus a premium of six thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty cents. Further voted, the Board of Selectmen votes that in connection with the marketing and sale of the notes, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four. And a final official statement dated January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer. Be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved and adopted. The Board of Selectmen votes that the town treasurer and the Board of Selectmen be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a significant events disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule fifteen. C two dash twelve in such form as may be approved by bond council to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the notes for the benefit of the holders of the notes from time to time. The Board of Selectmen votes to authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures. In such forms as the town treasurer and bond council deemed sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place, to review and update said procedures. In order to monitor and maintain the tax status of the notes and to comply with relevant securities laws. The Board of Selectmen votes that any certificates or documents relating to the notes, collectively, the documents, may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original. And all of which shall constitute one in the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by electronic mail in a PDF file or by other electronic transmission. Shall be as effective as delivery of a manually executed counterpart signature page to such document. And electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purpose of the documents in all matters relating thereto, having the same legal effect as original signatures. The Board of Selectmen votes that each member of the Board of Selectmen, the town clerk and the town treasurer, be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions. And execute and deliver such certificates, receipts or other documents, as may be determined by them or any of them, to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes dated February sixth, two thousand twenty-four.
Can you, can you read that again? You messed up the third part.
Actually, as clerk of the Board of Selectmen, I hereby certify that that motion was read and read accurately.
Is there a second?
So, yes.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Bob, you ever do the movie Dick Marathon?
Might, yeah.
You should, I mean. That was very good. Very good. Hold on.
I got a little, really, I must choke on the cough drop, sorry.
Say, don't choke.
Make sure the board.
Mr. Kelly.
Executes all the documents, please.
We will sign everything once we're done with the meeting. Is there anything else you need pertaining to?
For that.
To the Band-Aids? Nothing? Okay. We're all set.
Now you can go with the band.
Yeah, live bands. So, gentlemen, we, we remember what they was, a request from the, the DFW for, uh, live music. I went over the conversation with, um, Victoria Hunt, the manager, and she just asked if, uh, occasionally, they would have live bands, you know, it's in the low level, basically, to sell over the place. So, um, I asked her if she would be happy with eleven AM to twelve AM. And she said, absolutely, that would be fine. So, is there a motion to approve live music from eleven AM to twelve AM?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then we were made aware of the American Legion, they're looking to, um, add live music to their restricted music license as well. I would ask for the same motion for, to give a live music with the hours of operation from eleven AM to twelve AM.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Next, the, uh, town travel policy. Sure, you gentlemen, we have read through this thing. It's pretty quick and easy. Uh, Mr. Kelly, good job getting this.
It's, uh, one that is used, uh, in a number of municipalities. We noticed it was not in place here. Uh, we've seen some exorbitant travels lately, and we wanted to start to rein it in.
Is there a motion to approve the town travel policy?
So moved.
As presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Town administrators report.
Uh, primarily what I'd like to talk to the board about is very quickly, as you know, we reported about the, uh, lack of. State aid and how it's put the, uh, revenue estimates versus the budget buster expenditures to the point where. We are somewhere between one point five and two million dollars in deficit before we start to do budget work. And meeting with the schools in two weeks. We have public safety going before the FinCon. Uh, the police have gone, the fire is going tomorrow night. The board has said that public safety is a priority, so we have them early in the process. And then, uh, we will look at the other, uh, major budget busters. I met with the health insurance. Uh, group today to talk about how we can control that cost. Uh, but the interesting thing to me are the, uh, fact that you have a six hundred and eighty-five thousand projection from Old Colony. Of, uh, five hundred and eighty projection from the schools on just salaries. And then a three hundred thousand projection on increase of buses, and that's out of our deficit, that's one point two million. So, I think the school, both Old Colony and the Acushnet School District have to sharpen their pencils.
Yeah, I was gonna, I would like to have Old Colony in it, at the next meeting in two weeks, start discussing their budget before they finalize a budget. And try to get to the bottom of this six hundred and eighty-four thousand dollar increase. So, if we can have Mr. Polanski in, um, have some budget discussion with him.
There are twenty-two additional students from.
I seen that. I seen that. But we, we need to have that conversation sooner rather than later. Um, and then, of course, our, our public schools, um, they need to do what they need to do as well, um, with FinCon. I don't know when they're scheduled to go in front of FinCon, but.
That's sixth of March.
Okay. Sixth of seven, Wednesday's the seventh. Is it March fifth is the Monday, the primary? Oh, no, fifth is Tuesday.
Tuesday.
You've got, uh, leave here February twenty-ninth.
So, if we can get Old Colony in just to start that discussion, I think it would be helpful for, to see Aaron and bring him in, um, and if he wants, I forgot the girl, I think her name's Sarah, the finance girl.
Correct.
She can come along too and, and give us, you know, some, some scope of what the budget's looking like and why it's looking like that. I mean, it's, it's a huge cost.
Yeah.
Huge cost. And I, I don't know if we could, we can't clearly exorbe that. We got this big ass deficit, right? And we're gonna have to, as much as we like public safety and we wanna try to control that, we might be looking at some, some areas of trimming in those budgets as well. We'll have to figure that out. some areas of trimming in those budgets as well. We'll have to figure that out once we start looking at budgets. But I'd really like to get Old Colony in. Start that discussion with them early. And we'll start hammering out budgets as well once, you know, I know they like to go through FinCon and all that, give a presentation, but the ultimate people with the scissors is this board right here, so.
It's the Board of Selectmen's budget.
Again, it's going to be, it's going to be a tough time making decisions, right? So we all need to do our share and we'll figure it out and try to, I mean, we only have a few budgets that are big budgets. The rest of them are kind of small budgets. You know, and the biggest ones would be Kushner Public Schools, Old Colony. And then, you know, we have DBW Police and Fire, but there's only so much flexibility within those.
Approximately sixty percent is education.
That's just, isn't that just the Kushner side? It's not including Old Colony, is it? Because that includes Old Colony sixty? Okay, so.
Sixty, sixty-two.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. So we got to do what we got to do. Hopefully, everybody will do their part and we'll see where we can get this. I mean, we can't, we can't go to town meeting with a deficit.
Well, and the fact that this board was looking to schedule town meeting later this year after talking to the town clerk because of the elections works to an advantage because we might be able to get a better figure from the state once the House and the Senate start to work on their budgets.
We can pray that, we can pray that that happens, but we lost a hundred and seventy-six thousand in state aid from the last time we talked. That's an ouch number.
Yeah, well, the half of one percent for Chapter seventy, education aid was a real big boost.
That's, well, yeah, came out to one, negative one seventy-nine from just that one line item, but in the end, we, there was one seventy-six, so. They made up three grand somewhere, but that didn't get me to the goal line.
Getting thirty-five thousand dollars more from last year is a pittance.
Yep, just keep taking that baseball bat out and hit me in the head. Anything else, Mr. Kelly, on the town?
No, not right now. I'm fixated on the budget.
When you, when you bring new revenue numbers in, can you, can you bring better news? Is that a red line? Can you have green line showing that they're in the positive?
I will.
I did a comp to your other sheet and I'm like, oh boy, here we go.
I do not have the power of the Fed to print money.
Yeah, no kidding. I mean, that. I think the governor, the governor needs to do a better job. That's what I say. Allocating funds where it doesn't need to be spent instead of worrying about the people, right?
A million dollars to take care of the latest problems.
Yep, that's nice.
A billion, sorry.
Here we go. That baseball bat just keeps coming on out. All right, nothing else, Mr. Kelly?
No.
All right, so Selectmen's announcements, Mr. Warren?
No, I was going to talk about the double poles, but you brought that up. Pretty much it.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to touch base on something that's listed in information only about Chief Farland. Any opportunity this fire chief gets to better himself and get accreditation, he does. And he did receive Massachusetts Fire Services Commission accreditation. So I just want to say good job to Chief Farland for always looking forward. You know, any next step he can take to better himself at the job. I appreciate it. And so does the rest of the town.
Yep, and I will, I'll just stay on the fire department, EMS department. If the folks, the residents in town notice a new tanker truck driving around, we did take delivery in our fire department of our new tanker truck. It's absolutely beautiful. It's a great piece of equipment, long needed piece of equipment for firefighters in the Town of Akushnet. And thank you on behalf of the Board of Selectmen. Thank all the residents that supported our town meeting to purchase that tanker. Is that it?
That's it.
Happy birthday to Mr. Gasbuck.
Oh, yeah, happy birthday.
All right, yeah. Is there a motion to adjourn?
All right, yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.